Even pass them out.
I can take them.
You want to?
It's uh, it's Gavin.
I want to thank you guys.
Everybody.
I think I want to thank all of you for coming. It's a part of our democratic process here.
Okay, yeah, you gotta have the yellow ball of hope.
And we'll do and discuss the uh.
Guys.
You're gonna start it. Tom, I can't hear Dave. He has a very quiet voice, so you'll have to stop him. Sorry.
But thank you all for coming. We have uh one absentee member tonight, that's Tom Wilson. I'd like to get a motion to seat Ginger in his absence.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so Ginger, you're seated tonight. And we have two spending plans to review. First is the Canada Board of Education. So I'd like to turn this over to Pat. She can give you a brief summary and then you can follow with questions and discussions. Thank you, Pat.
You bet. Um, just as the uh, I have a more of education presentation, uh, this is to tell me. Uh, the original was presented to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance did reduce our budget by five thousand dollars. We took out another thirty thousand dollars, which I will explain on the front. Because it goes to uh, the federal market, when you know, uh, a tax. The bottom was, if you go on the page, page one, um, what we, what we surveyed, um, makes it a little bit better, for everybody, um, is we do a little bit of a walk here. Um, how the board, as she goes about planning, gets uh, proposed us, a spending plan, ladies start. I'll go about it, uh, people, we, um, consult, um, go on the ways, and I'm not going to read that. They think that's something, maybe when you guys get home, you may want to take us, um, also looking at the beginning. And then, Barry, the university, we get into itself, um, this process. And it does not end until, uh, sometime in March. At this point too, I'd also like to, um, just let you know some of the other members of the, um, Board of Education I recor- I recognize. Um, and recognize, uh, we have Emily. Okay, Emily, um, Eelsir. Is that the board, Maria, um, um, Maria, Maria, the internal crystal is on the board. They are with me, and we also have, uh, myself, that makes it three. Um, and we also have, uh, I'm going, boy. We, we also have, um, well, uh, Meg's, Meg's husband, Anna here. And, um, last member, which is Lucy Gray, who has kind of double duty, she does, as you know, she is the social director for the town.
Okay.
So it's a very long process, it's a very complicated process. Um, lots of people have to be tied back, lots of things have to be, um, lots of things have to be done. Um, the next part of this is to just, uh, what we call an executive summary. It, it kind of walks you through very quickly, um, what this, uh, Board of Education proposal is all about. Um, I would like to point out that it has two parts. Um, one is the Regional One Spending Plan. And that is, uh, a plan allowed to the town spending with the Board of Education. Uh, that's not controlling in and of itself. Um, I happen to be a member of the, um, June Board of Education as well, as a town of Kansas representative. And I can tell you that that is a long process too, and we have a very good, um, committee, finance committee. It puts this together, and if any of you know Sam Derris, you know he's smart. He really is a great business manager, he puts everything, um, uh, together, uh, but overall, um, the Regional One Plan is have been increased at one point oh five percent. And the, uh, our plan, the Calon Plan, just for the town of Kansas, Calon, is one point five nine percent. Um, we were asked, uh, prior to this meeting, to reduce, to reduce our, our supposed spending plan for twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we had a very tight plan, which I think, uh, were my reflection of doing this for many, many years. Um, both the town plan and this, the plan, our plan, are always very, very tight when we bring them to the board. Please, even now, standing other member of, of the Board of Education, of the Board of Selectmen and the stuff, um, either one of those, I see the end, there's a, a process here, and I'm sure there's a few others that I am missing that when, that one time or another were, um, they're doing this work. It's, it's a, it's a very tight budget, it was very difficult for us to figure out where we're going to get twenty thousand dollars without hurrying, um, the series. But anyhow, uh, there's a number of series in here. And what the executive summary does is summarize, um, each series. Um, so you have, um, originally, we had, um, nine hundred, uh, different, uh, series. Um, with the last series and then having series which I'll talk about in a few minutes. That one was yours now, and I'll tell you why, um, it was, uh, um, we are very proud of the work that Calon does. Um, we are quite popular, United States tuition-based, uh, school. Uh, we draw kids, uh, from as far as New York State to our school, so we know, I think we know we're doing a pretty darn, um, uh, good job of educating our, uh, educating our childrens. And, um, you know, we just, all our, uh, that's about the one. Like the library, uh, we are kind of the set of pieces, the two set of pieces of the town. And it is those two institutions I like, which bring people together in our, uh, community and draw people from the outside here. Um, if you turn to the first page of the budget, and what we have done, as you see, we have explanation up here of each line, and then the lines are below. So, I don't know how exactly long they go, but I'll go quickly through these, and then if you have any questions about anything, uh, you can go back to whatever your question is about, and I'll be happy to answer what I can. For the one other series is the salaries. Most of these salaries are governed by contractual, by contract. So the numbers that you find in there are contractual, contractual ones. Um, one is for certified staff. Uh, and the others are, they are what, the classified staff, or what we used to call in a sense of. So you can see that the teachers, uh, the line there, when teacher is extra paid with extra duty, then it will pop in the, um, explanation. Extra pay for extra duty is, uh, teachers during the year, most students cost a group, uh, classroom. Teachers' classroom, which is every other year. Whistle, maybe there's regional banking course as well, aside coordinator and, and in literature. So, um, that's, you know, that can be a huge, um, a huge part of, um, of our budget. Um, under the, um, hundred series, we also have severance, we do have one teacher, um, longtime teacher at Calon. Who was in retirement, and that would be Mark Bobel, uh, some of you have educated, go to Calon, know that Mark has taught Spanish at Calon for many, many years, over twenty, and he will be leading us, that is, uh, our position. Um, this, the, the classified staff, the library manager, the nurse, the summer custodian. Uh, we, we employ two care professionals, the office administrator, uh, with Lori Watson, uh, the board clerk, and then we have, um, our Chad Olson, who is our daytime custodian and the head custodian. And then we have the evening custodian, and then we have some overtime for the custodian in case there is, first, this is going to be a huge snowstorm. Maybe help, um, during the walkways, we're very careful of the room, because a lot of that group, as you folks know, is flat. And we can't let too much weight, uh, even, you can ask Bill, maybe, he's been up there on the roof, um, shoveling it up, uh, a number of times. So that's the, um, that's the one hundred series. If you turn the page, the two hundred students are related to spendings, we keep the prepaid, uh, one, two, seven, and so, of their, um, of their, uh, benefits, the dental and health insurance. Um, and then we also have pensions under that, um, that category as well. Um, on point of compensation and workers' compensation is there too. And we have a life insurance, and you can see at the bottom, um, that where things have gone down a little bit, where things have, um, up a little bit. Um, the next series is the three hundred series, that's on the next page, that's our purchase terms. Um, that are also our property services. Um, this is on the yearbook, student activity, we have enough things, upper red, staff development, in-service training, um, which we are going to have quite a bit of, because we are switching over some of our things to two other programs that the state of Connecticut requires. So the, uh, the teachers have to be educated, um, without those programs. They also have to do environmental testing. We have, um, telecommunications with the internet and technology, um, support. And the series four hundred is for, uh, payment for our water, our, some of your leads along here. Um, I don't know what that kind of differences, we have, uh, some equipment maintenance, uh, facility maintenance, and building improvement. Um, I would like to mention at this point, that the, uh, roof is an ongoing, um, situation for us. We replaced part of the roof, uh, last summer. Um, we know that there are other, we have, what we have done is put the roof in different sections. And we know that there's a section of the roof that is going to need, that, um, going to need attention. We finished one section, um, last summer. And that was done through our deposit, was landed to West London Town, and we also have, uh, a reserve account for that, which we were able to take money out of, and it didn't impact, uh, it didn't impact, it's taxared, it'll be huge, um, with a huge amount of money to do it. We have put the money aside, little by little, and between the armpits that were given to us, and what we had aside, we're not in a Calon, we're in a house. We were able to pay for them. Um, the next section of roof that we're going to do is, uh, a little bit bigger, and is a little bit old. So it might take a little bit more, like, uh, the roof re- the roof replacement last summer was a hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So you can see the importance of us putting money aside annually, so that we save up, or they did, um, for, for big costs like that, they don't have to pay the tax bill, with, 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 uh, finger on, or we have to work. Um, alright, um, yes, uh, the next series is series five hundred. Um, there's only some of our largest costs, transportation, the insurance, big insurance, cyber insurance. The cyber insurance is incredibly expensive. And we did try, we did, we, we, as you said, uh, in, we did. Um, she helped with the town, I saw it's fast, it's a safe as mine. But the, the cyber insurance will not allow us to do that. Um, I, I would assume that maybe that we're, that the school might be at a bigger risk than, than, than the town is. And so they won't let us do that, so we have to, we have to, uh, put, put money in the budget for that, uh, our own. And then we have, you know, regular things like, um, the student physicals, which are, are required by law. And then we have telephone postage, bringing and advertising, uh, summer school, uh, summer school is dependent. There are two different schools, the one needs to bolster the kids who need, uh, additional help over summer, so that they can build with, from that, by the skills that they were of, of in school here. Uh, sometimes that number is higher, sometimes that number is a little bit lower. Uh, this year, uh, summer school is a little bit, uh, lower than it was last year, so we've been able to decrease some of our debt. Um, and then we have staff travel and principal travel and technology hardware. And by, and by the way, at the end of this, there's another whole, um, thing that we put together for you, that is called the technology budget proposal, just so you can see how that, that money is used for technology, money is delivered, is used for technology. Uh, okay, next is the uh, six hundred series, which are supplies. Uh, as you can see, as we move down, at the percentage of increase, the one year to another, a lot of them, we have been able to keep, keep the same. Uh, technology applications, again, we have to keep up with what's going on. And otherwise, we are going to be left behind, so that costs a little bit more money. The, um, the, uh, uh, propane, uh, is, uh, is it, uh, estimated, uh, the price of a dollar forty-nine, nine gallon. Uh, fuel oil, we, we have both, in a big school, by the way. We have propane, and we do have a bit of fuel oil. We do have a, uh, contract, uh, that was, uh, locked in on two ninety-five, uh, of the, yeah, where the fuel oil. We can sell, based on the regional contract also, which is, uh, fixed for us as two ninety-five. Uh, the textbooks this year are going to be both hard, um, hard print and digital textbooks. And, uh, mostly for ELA not, and Spanish, and we have new regional science of reading program materials, okay, to read, that, um, we have planned for, but that also will be supplemented with some grant money. And then, um, we have library books, library supplies for professional qualifications. Um, Hill, and then, uh, Osskay, and then the, uh, uh, equipment. And then the store, first, two thousand dollars, probably, uh, the permit, and then instructional work, and those, the permit, um, is for non-instruction, things like desks, stools, chairs, bookcases, shelves, things of that sort, that, um, that eventually wear, okay? Um, and then we have instructional work, and non-consumable supplies, such as easels, footboards, maps, and things like. But, um, if any, you got to the capital expenses, that, that was, that's what I was talking about in the beginning. Um, that has been zeroed out. We were told, I, I spoke to, they were told by, and I spoke to me on, personally. And we were told that, um, even, we, we cannot make a contribution to that non-recurring capital account through our budget. That if, if it's done, it has to be done through the municipal budget, so that is part of this budget, where, um, that money has been placed there that we always set aside. Uh, twenty thousand for capital building transfer, and ten thousand for, um, uh, for this technology, our fixed technology, uh, transfer. And hopefully that will be placed in, in the, um, in those accounts. Uh, we understand that it's, and it's not, it's not anything that's required, but certainly is something that we think should be done, so that we don't get ourselves in a pickle, and don't have, um, don't have the money available when we need it. And, um, so the total, uh, we H Calon, um, budget, um, um, after we, um, were asked to take an additional, what, twenty thousand dollars plus the thirty, and I just explained where we are now, where our increase, um, the Calon budget is one point five nine percent. Um, and below that, you see our portion for high school tuition, pupil services, administrative services. And that's up one point oh five percent. So, um, our increase is one point three eight percent. Um, but that was after, we have, we taken the twenty thousand dollars out. And again, as I said at the beginning, I hope we're thinking to take it out, where it did not, first, this. It's not easy, and you're already very, this way responsible, to take a big, something like that, um. We hope we've done a good job, and we don't have done a job that will not, first, this. Any questions? Yes, Andrew?
So, um, first of all, thank you, uh, I think you do have a really good budget. Um, I have a little bit of a concern, because I see that in electricity, fuel, propane, gas, and fuel oil, that you cut, um, decreased the amount that you budgeted for. We just had a really mild winter. And I know that you, we reduced it based on your numbers from this past year. I'm a little nervous if we have a, uh, more difficult winter, uh, you know, a harder winter, next winter, that you are not going to have any money in the budget here.
Well, uh, let's put this way, we do work with C I T R, and we do work just for last year. We had to look at the last two or three years, and figure out our consumption from the last several years as to what it is, but you know, that is one of those that is unknown, we can only go by the information that we have. We've gone some, that's over years, and we've worked with that, so, um, I guess, it's one of the.
Right. And I have one more question, and this is a really small line item, but it's the physical. Or is the elementary school going to be able to access the new health office at the high school for things like physical?
That is a good question, that has not come up. And we, I will ask that question to, to, uh, to our supervisor, to see if that might be, um, a possibility. We do have a new, um, part of the high school, um, actually, A P R. So excuse me, it's actually the A P R. So she has a doctorate, so I want to see how about that. It's right, it's about it. Um, and they, they do, uh, they do a great job over there, um, that might be able to be, um, that might be able to be, uh, I, I've asked about that, I, I couldn't tell you, that's a good question, it never came up.
I just know, it's a, it's a bill of their strength, so I was hoping he would have the same in Virginia.
Right, we've tried, that's a, that's many sources we do.
I know, but, yeah, we'll see, maybe because we're in the same town, no one else. Okay.
Yes?
Yeah. Um, how many students, uh, currently, uh?
Maybe two, no, eighty-two.
And how many do you forecast for next year?
About the same.
And then the high school, Ron, all of it?
Um, I think we have about fifty-eight or so.
And forecast next year?
Well, we have a pretty, we have a, a, a pretty good sized, um, eighth grade class, but that has been all figured in, to the, uh, to our figures.
That was fifty-eight, and you're saying fifty-eight next year too, with the high school?
Well, we're going to have a pretty, that has anticipated the eighth grade class going in as.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Is, is that all?
Um, well, I'll work out the details on first student, could you give me that now?
First student, I, I couldn't give it to you.
No.
I'm sure it's in the thirty-something place.
Thirty thousand something here.
Yeah. Um, from my point of view, that's irrelevant, we have to, we have to educate the kids. And, um, I think, uh, just as we have done a very good job, being very improved in our budget. Because I'm on the high school board, I could tell you that the high school is starting to send them, but I see a handle in there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm watching County Clark. Um, the high school tuition budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three was up over a million dollars. And now you're down in the eight hundred, eighty thousand range. Our pupil services is one of the other. From like three hundred and twenty thousand and two, four hundred and twenty left out.
Okay, let me, let me explain to you how pupil services and regional services, that are, is, uh, for the high school tuition, that is, it's, it's come from our, right? In pupil services and in our, uh, in the other, our, it's the same. It's a, it's a whole district, and it is, it is calculated on the whole district. So that, that is, that is the way that is now. Unfortunately, when we held the, uh, here, um, several, several weeks ago, um, Andrew was asking me about, it was heavily out. Um, we did have a plan, but we hadn't heard before that. I will tell you, not one person outside of the board members, which that came to be here, which is too bad. I, when people came to the high school, for the services and our, it's here. I would have a better grasp of how all of that works. Right, for our tuition, the state's just got a number of kids that we sent to the school, it's appropriate costs. On the others, because everybody, everybody is, anybody in any school, will use that, we do the calculations. And I do think it is, from my perspective, and for many, many years, I do think it is. Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, Chris Kinsella. Um, it actually was, uh, series one hundred, but seconds, like, uh, that involves ninety-three hours, that's people one time.
That is, okay, for anyone who's worked in our school twenty years, their contract um, allows for fifteen percent, uh, severance pay, um, on their last year of income. Okay? This severance is only for a part-time person. If this person, if this person, that we had, even, that would have probably been.
You have twenty-eight thousand, you have twenty-one, twenty-two, several?
Uh, in the last few years, um, say, since two thousand or so, we have retired all teachers, all over. So that's what the difference is, the person who is retiring is a part-time teacher, but also provided the pay, has drawn, you know, she is. But we, that's, um, that would be a part-time severance.
Yeah. Yeah, that's Chris Kinsella.
Yes, that's just, that has nothing to do with us.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, Andrew?
Thank you very much, Pat, that was very, uh, informative. Uh, we'll move on now to post-spending plan for the municipality, and I'd like to, our, for selectmen, to give you a summary of that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, thank you very much. And I would like to thank all the residents for being here this evening, I would just like to recognize our selectmen who are in, uh, the audience here this evening, Judy Jacobs, Chris Kinsella, and also our treasurer, Michelle Hansen. I think that they'll be adding in as we go along here this evening, and talking about us. I just want to reiterate one thing that I said before, when I prefaced what a budget is, this is the proposed spending plan, which will become a budget. But a budget is just not a bunch of numbers on a page, but rather, it should reflect the aspirations and the values of our community. So again, as we go through this, I would ask you all to look at it with that type of eye. The aspirations and the value of our community. Let's first go to page one. I want to call your attention to the right-hand columns, the post-spending certain by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, right, and you can hear. This year, things were done a little bit different. The Board of Selectmen presented three times to the Board of Finance, our spending plan, our post-spending plan. And as we went through each of those plans, a little bit was whittled off, it was forty-seven thousand, then we gained thirty thousand, seventeen thousand, twenty-eight thousand. Those numbers bounced back and forth. Right now, this is your plan, the Board of Finance, to hear. I'll explain where we were, and then you can explain where you are, Mr. Chair.
Alright.
Okay, but basically, this is the plan, and again, the cart was a little bit before the horse, because, uh, in other years, we kind of went to the hearing here first, and heard what everyone had to say. And then, we worked on the budget, or I should say, the Board of Finance, but you got a little, little ahead this year. So again, we'll go and look at those two columns, and I'll just go through the highlights. General Gotham Services, one thousand one, Selectmen expenses. The administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen was, uh, taken down from seventeen hundred to seven hundred fifty dollars. The Selectmen Secretary Board Recorder, instead of the number of meetings we had before, we just pared it down to the twelve meetings we would have, the regular Board of Selectmen meetings. Town Hall expenses, one thousand two. Very little change there, again, I would just tell you, it's the cost of doing business, collection is more, telephone is more. It's just the cost of doing business. Legal expenses, uh, they were taking, taken down, uh, town council and litigation. The fact that we don't use those every year, I don't think there's any reflection that we should not have them there. Because maybe the one time that we eat that, that, don't have. But they were reduced by, uh, Board of Finance. Board of Assessors, there's a big jump here. The jump is because of technology. Three different things. Vision appraisal, quality data system, and the geographic information system. And those are the three big things that have made our technology jump in that particular office. Tax collector. The jump that you see is. The jump that you see is in the assistant tax collector. Uh and most of you, I'm sorry. Oh, I I apologize. Board of Finance, you were supposed to jump in there, Mr.. Okay, uh again, there uh one thousand, excuse me. I hit Board of Assessors, Board of Assessment Appeals. Apologize, there was no uh, nothing there. One thousand seven, Board of Finance. Okay, uh again, uh their jump was in the secretary's line. And. Annual report. Right, the annual report.
And we had a jump in the art, in my contract.
Accounting Services, yes, jumped in that contract, which we had with Ken and Ken. Tax collector. There's no jump in pay and salary for the tax collector.
Yeah.
The assistant tax collector was given more hours. Oh, excuse me, not that, I forgive me. I should have put on my glasses, I knew you were. Tax collector. The uh tax collector's line was eliminated. Okay, or decreased by fifty-four point three four percent. Because the assistant tax collector was not needed as much. Tax expense sale then reduced. Treasure. Treasure salary, beginning the same. Deputy treasure being more hours, there's a jump there, one hundred and twenty-nine, twenty-six, three percent. Reason being, we're changing over to quick. From our current system. There'll be schooling, there'll be more hours put in, because the treasure and the deputy treasurer both. Training, which was a new line we established in the treasurer's line. Uh is at six hundred dollars. We originally started out at a thousand, but we cut that down to six. Uh the expenditures. Town clerk. I would just call your attention to, there is no jump for certification yet. Our town clerk will be working on our certification next year. So we'll see next year's, but don't know. Assistant town clerk, a line that we didn't have last year, we are gonna establish. Inex renovation, again. We left that line open with just a uh stop. Moving on to ten eleven. Planning and zoning. Zoning enforcement officer is uh again. We're at, I should have worn my glasses, so I am going to apologize again. Zoning enforcement officer is up eleven point eight five percent. Secretary also up. Perfolment expense, the same, posted the same. The attorney's fees. Attorney is down, and consultant slash engineer planner is has been. Regis, uh zoning Board of Appeals. Again, remains the same and low. Register voters, ten fourteen. There was a great growth in that, but I would tell you that's a one-off this year. And that is because thoroughly voting. Again, everyone from the registrars through the moderators are needed. More time than they ever have been before. So again, that's a one-off. If uh the constitutional amendment goes through the legislature, this will not be a problem next year. Insurance, ten fifteen. Again, the only thing that has changed is the bonding. But we remain with property liability insurance and witness count, the same. Line ten sixteen benefits. Again, the growth goes along with. The town employees' rates. Economic development. Again, we just kept the line open with one dollar. At ten seventeen, line ten seventeen. Public health. We have our representative here from the Tarkin Public Health District, so I must have to mention this. They have been flat for a number of years. They continue to be flat. No growth, even though our population has grown. Dog Officer Fund, we left the same. Healthcare S V N A, the same. The Hush Time Services Bureau, the same. There was a growth in the Greenwood Central Health Service. Social Services. The director, he had initially asked for an additional four hours for her, could be carried it down to two hours. Junior Center, no growth there. The Northwest Spring District, Twitchfield Hills Nutrition, and here at adult daycare, transport. All moved because of the number of people that utilize. Utilize those services. Ten twenty, the daycare center. Okay, once again. Building maintenance went up. And ground maintenance. Ten twenty-one, streetlights. Like the people like in the center of town at certain times of the day. Ten twenty-two, general assistance, welfare dispersments, and the emergency fund remain the same. Line ten twenty-three. Fund for non-municipal public benefit activities. The daycare grant remain the same. U D Hill Schoolhouse remained the same. The Falls Village Canyon Historical Society remain the same. The D M Hunt Library had initially asked for twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars more. The Board of Selectmen cut that to fifteen, and then the Board of Finance cut it to twelve. And nothing there. The Falls Village Children's Theater, the Center on Maids. They increased by forty-nine thirty dollars. Again, the Falls Village Community Development Corporation. It's a placehold. Line ten twenty-four, Conservation Commission, inland wetlands, again, remains the same. Line ten twenty-seven, general public safety. Nine-one-one, which field dispatch grew. By four hundred sixty-nine dollars, and that is based on our population. Fire marshal remains the same. Building inspector has been uh reduced by five thousand dollars. Producing management coordinator. Went up three point five oh, and I'll explain that also with all our current. Line ten twenty-eight. Non-recurring capital taxes. When we went in to look at everything, we cut, we cut across the board fifteen percent. Through our meetings, uh with the Board of Finance. They felt that the uh. Bridge and maintenance pair reserve should remain the same. And that the ambulance reserve also not be cut. As well as the bulky weights. I will tell you that the money that was put in. From the school, the twenty thousand. For the uh capital, building capital, and the capital technology were both cut by fifteen percent. One of the main street property. Yeah, you guys are building, boss is doing business between electric. Line twelve oh three thirty-five, Redwood Street's property. Hopefully will still be moving, are still moving on that. But nothing there. Line two thousand one, fire commission. Remains black, remained the same. Department of Public Works. Again, the growth you see is without. The other growth you'll see is the last line in the. Public Works, which is free removal. Moving communities not getting expected. Line three thousand two, town garage. Again, I would tell you just the cost of doing business. They keep using that term, but. Your electricity went up, so did the towns. Your heat went up, so did the towns. Your water went up, so did the town. Recommission. Again, salaries, growth in the salaries, primarily because. Uh any of you who've been following the local newspapers, so on and so forth, you know, you're out there. Getting all of those lifeguards during summer for the pool. And we are still, I want to look at the commission, the commissioner here is a, we're still a little behind. That is, and we're a little bit on a lower. We're not getting any sign on our bonuses. Re-sign on the ones. Rec director, their chemicals and supply. I don't know who else, who I hope, but I would imagine anyone who does know, etcetera, so they've gotten a little bit more expensive. Equipment and supplies. Uh part of the equipment out at the rec area is the chairs, case lines, and so forth around the pool. Uh we don't want anyone falling through that. They're in tough shape. Inter program, uh. We had originally taken uh two thousand dollars out of that Board of Selectmen, but it was reinstated. By the Board of Finance. Maintenance repairs, ground maintenance, of course. Everything's a little bit more expensive. Jump to line six thousand one. Again, equipment rental is up. I do give you this warning as I gave to the Board of Finance, let you know. We are in negotiations currently, having to do with our pick and fees and so forth, because of the dissolution here. There may be a chance somewhere down the road that this will uh will be asking for more money. Somewhere down the road. We scrapped our food scrap collection pilot. We handling that differently. Debt service payments. Ten twenty-five. Again, you can take a look at that yourself. We're in pretty good shape. We are at very low debt in this town. Uh debt service principal. Line ten twenty-six. Overall total budget of the government is up three point six zero percent. Before I end and take questions. Name of our county employees is a three point five percent weight. Two numbers, three point two. We take something in between. Does make it a lot.
You can what, I have uh a two, three items, which I'm addressing to the Board of Finance pending bill. That will be enacted at our town meeting, which is our legislature's executive. One is the uh the matter of illegal. Legal amounts in the Board of Finance. Reason that was added a number of years ago was to give the Board of Finance the ability to secure independent counsel. That would not be the town council with the select. Uh retain, like gave independence and getting legal advice for ten. I think it it's wise to eliminate that. The handicap itself should be independent legal. The other matter, I I would directly, for selection, in the recreation budget, it seems to me that it would be. In order to have an amount for uniforms, so that personnel and pool and otherwise. Higher than that town expense.
I can tell you that is of last year, that our recreation director and myself had that discussion. And I am just going to go further for a moment.
Yeah, we do provide um red lifeguard t-shirts. For older bathing suits, and then they're required to get their own red. Red cross certified too.
I just didn't see it as a line I.
No.
I'm sorry.
It's there.
Thank you. The uh the last item pertained to the consultant, engineer, et cetera, regarding planning and zoning. Uh I, it is concerned me that. To some extent, planning and zoning, I believe, has gotten out of this lane. It is a regulatory entity, and its regulations are on. The use of the land use of private property owners. So as a regulatory entity. You don't see that it needs to involve engineering regarding public works. The planning and the operations and planning of the town and the general government, and in particular, the public works. Is an executive function, not a regulatory function. So I think that there's some confusion there, and I I should see what I was referring to, and I will bring it up here now. But it seems to me that that type of of expert advice, which does not pertain. It's open-ended, it does not particularly pertain to land use regulation. Either belongs in public works or in the selectmen's expenses. And if the planning and zoning needs expert advice of some particular kind that is not strictly speaking involving. Land use, regulation enforcement, they could make that request to the Board of Selectmen. And I'm asking you carefully consider either eliminating that line or moving it as I just mentioned. Thank you very much.
I am aware of this situation, and we will discuss this time at our regular meeting on Monday night. Primarily uh the issue of moving that to another line item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I I suppose I would just add this, which has nothing to do with being critical, but having had some experience in. Both your arm and and uh the uh first selectman's arm. And I'm on the coming to building committee of the Kellogg School. I think overall, I'm very proud of this thing, because it's a good job. It gets uh wherever spent, two dollars worth of value for one dollar spent. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Fred Lee said, um I want to address what you said about the consultant. So these consultants to P and C is very important. Because basically, our consultant does, well, actually, we look at the. The structure of the planning and zoning, we are two components. We're a planning component. And we're a zoning component. And the planning component, basically, we just completed a plan of conservation and development. Uh we would like to implement it, and actually, our consultant is the person that helps us implement. But uh I would like to respond to that. Um so it's not only is that consultant important to us. Uh from that point of view, but also um regarding legal issue. And regarding state mandate issues, which are really. And regarding state mandate issues, which are really critical. We need expert advice. And we get that from the consultant. And the consultant also acts as a buffer. Uh to. To the commission because. I'm I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but planning and zoning commissions are the most. Liable to litigation. You see it in Salisbury, you see it in other towns. We really need that uh interference. Which the consultant does, now uh essentially, we get legal advice from our consultant. At a much lower rate than an attorney at four, four hundred dollars an hour. And so that consultant does research, does all the uh. Necessary uh follow through that we need to make decisions. And that's critical because we are growing as a town. And there is, we just approved a. Four lot subdivision on BB Hill. Which is gonna be, we have other subdivisions coming, but. Be a pretty upscale subdivision. Seeing more and more of these two houses going up on uh. And we're seeing more and more activity where we need expert advice. And we came in, we had a couple of situations in the past few years. Where um there were potential lawsuits. On the town and fortunately, uh. P and Z working with the board of selectmen, were able to resolve a couple of these situations without going through litigation. So we really need that consultant to help us through some of these tricky areas. Because we don't want to get into a uh litigious situation. Um I I'm hoping that we can consider that because I think it's really important to have. A legal representation as needed, but it's also important that we have a consultant at the end. We need that expert advice.
I agree with that. Uh I, to the extent that that Fred was talking about, it's for laser was talking. I think that the line item needs to be more specific. Uh consultant is open ended and then we, the aspect of the engineer, to me. Which is can push them out of lane, out of their lane into the executive department. Supposed to a regulatory entity. Be more specific. With regard to the planning aspect, the planning that has to do with. Telling private property owners what they can do with their property, that's, I don't dispute that. But planning beyond that, that is conceptual, we were told by the expensive consultant that that's aspiration. My high school physics teacher would have. Put in plain language aspirational as suggestions, but if you're talking about a major. Plan that affects the town as whole, that's an executive shouldn't, and that's in their board. Not the regulatory entity, so there needs to be some specificity at least. Some adjustment of this, so the people know where their money's going more narrowly. Would ask you to carefully consider that without disputing. Mister Laser's good intentions with regard to a difficult. Department.
I agree. We will, thank you.
Yeah, um I think that's not a better idea, Lou, what you propose.
Well, that's no fun if we can't argue, but.
I've been for years, why would you stop? Um I think. What happens is we can't always plan. In planning and zoning for what's gonna happen throughout the year. Our public carings, we've been having more and more public carings, they run to two to three hundred dollars, they're shot. I mean, you know, we're just not covering under our our expenses now for this additional workload. Now, the thing I wanted to address with Lou is um. The engineering aspect is very important and an example is with the fire. We had to have the engineer review that, make sure that was. Going to, you know, work essentially and also report back to planning and let us know how that was gonna uh.
I'd like to answer that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and then additionally. Parking plan that was developed, we needed the engineer to help us develop that. So there's a number of situations where we need an engineer to look at a subdivision. Usually, the developer of the subdivision is gonna pay for the engineer and that's in the tradition. The fact of the matter is, uh we do need engineers throughout the process to give us their expert opinions. Also, um I think that uh we can get some more specificity. With the consultant line item, but. We actually, I think it was in twenty two, twenty three, we had close five thousand. And now we're taking it down to nine thousand, I mean, and we used a good portion of that and it was worth the use. It's like, right. This, no, that wasn't, the P O C U was.
Mister Chairman, I answer through you. Um that is, what you're saying, Fred. Through you, not talk to you, but what concerned me about. With respect to the department, the and uh and the uh the firehouse property is those were public works. And that's an executive function, the the planning and operations, plans and operations. Of the town's general government, specifically including public works, belongs to the three of them. And um there's nothing wrong with planning and zoning saying to to the executive authority. Can you give us some information? But we're back planning and we're back at at. Spending of the people's money is getting out of their lane, not that they can't get the information. But if they have to go through the board of selectmen, aside from the question of whose lane it is, who's the executive, who's the regulatory? It makes them work as a team. That that can only be good if we're talking about public administration working best when there is good order and discipline. That can provide that good order and discipline, both with specificity and with people with the department staying in their lanes. Thank you, sir.
Chair. One more, one, one, one quick comment. We, regarding the firehouse, what happened there is there were a number of issues that we needed to be answered in order for the town to move forward. And the P and Z, we only had to have an expert, a consultant. In order to move forward, doing research on the background, on a number of items in terms of what can be. Actually with that property before we could, we we basically collaborated with the selectmen. And I think it was a great collaboration and I see us collaborating more, more often. With uh the B O S and we'd like to collaborate with Board of Finance, but we'll see what happens. Uh but anyway, I just wanted to let you know, we need that assistance.
We, I think you took my point and I stand on what I said. Parting, whose lane is what?
Get a precision on Greg.
Greg. I don't have everything left.
Oh, sure.
Um I would like to speak on the thing that's on. It's, they've covered a lot, they've discussed a lot, but it's really not clear, you know, the the, I I'm hearing. An assertion that planning zoning is going out of its lane. I would strongly object to that and if it's gonna refer to thirty five Iron Street sale. For the first time that i- in my. Life, we actually had two commit a board and a commission working together. That has never happened. And it shouldn't happen more, and that was full of, in the outcome, I don't think anybody at the department. Deny that that outcome was. Um a new way to, new approach, if it's a. It not only looked at what we had starting, what we were dealing with, it looked into the future. And that collaboration is something that is more easier. There was a letter presented um. When the board of finance requested a request to lower their. Total spending proposal. With a letter that or that was coming around, there was a letter that was presented to the board of finance and the board of selectmen for planning and zoning. Explaining a lot of what Chairman Laser had to say. I'm curious that that.
I I don't recall this getting up.
I don't have weekend.
I know it was presented to the first election. I don't recall that, that was not. So the the problem that I see with that is historically, right, it's always gone to keep the board of selectmen since they're spending a role. If that thing is coming toward finance, that shows that we have an area to work with. The planning and zoning is kind of following time on that and we look at. And then we're trying to make changes with up of our operations because we've always been just too. Our whole goal is. To to protect the town and everything, anybody in the building trade, all the easy stuff is gone. It's already built. Everything now is difficult and expensive and complicated and. I have no problem with more specificity, you never. More knowledge than the board finance has, better you can make a judgment whether what. Planning and zoning is needed. But that can't happen without working together. Same as the planning and zoning or or second and thirty five vertical street. And zoning is, I think, the most possible friendly uh permission to work within town. We want you to know what we're doing. We want to know what you want from us, but if that communication that we did to first step, it doesn't get you. What what do you want from the planning and zoning? How do we, how do we fix? You can't fix it where we are now, how do we fix it going next year, two years, ten years?
And we.
If you don't have communication between all of us. Then we have.
Can someone send us the letter?
Absolutely.
It should have been sent as well.
See, I I can't read. Chairman, the point of saying it should have been sent to the board of finance as well, but the direct to the board of selectmen or finance. I did not send it, so I'm not so. Finance, you may have pointed to a particular email.
Yeah, I I can just, I actually feel. That I can use it for finance, or I could read it.
No, no, just don't read it.
Yeah, they just said it.
It can't use.
Just send it.
Send it, okay. Yeah, was to the.
Yeah, as as a person who's out of board and for complaining, it's my commission for sixteen years myself. Um I don't disagree with what what Fred said, but I, after the parking plan that you were referring to, what parking plan was that?
It's the most recent one that's uh in the process of being developed.
Hey, I do have a little bit of a problem with that because I I wondered about about the parking plan, I went back to the planning and and zoning minutes. And I think I spoke to you last time, but I didn't see any authorization from the planning and zoning commission to do that particular. Um to do that particular plan. I agree with Lou in in this regard. When we did the four hundred fifty thousand dollars, which uh we got a grant to do the downtown here. So I was on the board. And there was a lot of collaboration with the board of finance and other boards as we did the project. So I, I, you know. I think all the boards and commissions in our town are pretty friendly and are. Very interested in doing things in the correct way for the public. So I wouldn't say that the uh pla- and not that the planning and zoning commission isn't friendly, but I think pretty much all our boards and commissions are friendly, so. I don't think I would want about the help. Um a- as far as that parking um plan went, I did see that parking plan because you had talked about. About the plan of conservation and development that Saturday night. You brought it back that Saturday morning and then we talked about it um after the meeting. Uh but I did check after that and I don't have any particular objection to it, but I saw no action by the planning and zoning commission. That authorized that to be done. Not that I have an objection to it, I just didn't see the proper authorizations um, you know, going going through that, so. You know, I would be, I would, I am a little bit concerned about that and maybe there was a miscommunication. I don't know, um but if things go to the board of finance and to the board of selectmen, if the letter is to vote for it, I'm assuming it went to the board of finance as well. Now, if it got lost in the shuffle, that's not really the board of selectmen's fault. If it's addressed to to both entities, so. I just don't like this idea of of placing blame, let's just work it out. Let's uh, you know, if something was done incorrectly or mistakenly. Let's you work it out in a friendly, illegal uh way, placing blame, placing blame gets us absolutely that much.
Hey, I, I've got an exception for Mister Barber. First of all, to many selectmen for not taking a salary increase. Or there's one employee in the, in, to me, they didn't. If I mean, reason that's the treasurer, that's the only other. Explain why.
Because the treasurer isn't in her first year of employment, we felt that it was not appropriate to give. The treasurer a uh kick, as we used to say when I worked for the state. Give uh her a raise this year because she's hasn't even completed a year.
She was, sorry, here in November, we, but. I also would like to make a statement to the board of finance. Tonight's hearing has two purposes. Board of Finance has the board of education and the board of selectmen present their spending plans to the town. Second purpose is to hear public comment regarding these spending. Board of Finance will then be. To decide what they want to present to town meeting, or the town's opinion. We're opening some cuts in here tonight that I don't think are significant. What makes Fallsville special? Is that it has a quality of life, it's not parallel. And the quality of life requires some much spending. These spending plans do not appear to have more dollars than are need, ones that were originally submitted. The educational spending plan and the municipal. Money saved on stripping on quality of life projects that make Fallsville so special are not worth a reduction, you know. You know, thirty thousand dollars, yes, for a reduction, that's one tenth, one mil. In your budget. That's what you'd save by by that script. And this in the educational budget, that twenty thousand, that's six tenths of one mil, that's all you're saving. The town will likely have more than eight hundred thousand dollars of wealth this year in its reserve fund. In addition, the town has over a million dollars in its reserve. Everything from fire trucks to the salt garage and those funds are available to the town to spend. You at town meeting simply need to approve spending and purpose from a fund. But we have another one million dollars that is in our reserve, so this talk of what we need to have fifteen percent, I mean, eight hundred pounds. Is thirteen percent of a six hundred thousand, fifteen million dollars. Members of the board of finance were chosen by the voters because they represent townspeople's back. Board of Finance members need to make a decision on what spending plan to send to the voter. Your charge is to present the spending plans you think best serve the town. You're under no obligation to reach consent to satisfy a minority on the vote. Simple four to two votes, and your spending plan, tell me. Trust that the majority. Will make the right decision. Thank you for your service, you know, this has not been an easy year. Thank you.
He would like to ask the board of finance, why those cuts in name? Where where do we stand with the budget like this? Was said. Compared to the supposed expenses. Well, there must have been a reason.
The reason is that we were facing a deficit. We're trying to maintain. By our accountant's advice and by conservative fiscal policy. Uh reserve account, a general fund account. Roughly equal to something between ten to fifteen percent of our ever, ever revenue. At the same time, uh we're looking at what nominal increase we had in our grant list. Put that together, we come up with a milk rate. And we're trying to minimize the amount of the increase in budget has directly on the taxpayers. So we went through the budget, but essentially, we defined to town. To see if there were any instances where we thought perhaps we were over budgeting. Or we could uh stand a little bit more trimming, just to try to make the impact on the taxpayers less. Everybody in Fallsville is sensitive to the amount of real estate taxes that we pay, obviously the board of finance sensitive also. And we're trying to minimize that amount. Last year, we dropped the rate by two mils. In retrospect, perhaps that was uh a little short sighted of us. Because we're gonna have to go back up this year in order to meet our deficit.
So what kind of deficit are we talking about?
I, I, we'll have to calculate that on Monday night. But one mil is worth about two hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. We're trying to get to and we have to dedicate some funds. From the general fund to offset that, you know, I would love to be able to get the reduction down to just one mil. But we may have to go a little higher than that.
So there's no number you can.
Yeah, as I said, it, we're, we're looking at a deficit right now of, I think, around four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of which portion we can fund from our general fund and a portion will have to come from an increase in taxes. And we'll determine that on Monday and after our town meeting. Henry.
Yeah, I have uh just two quick comments to make. Uh, I noticed that there was a fifteen percent reduction. In what we're setting aside for future costs. On our uh. Things like fire trucks, town trucks, et cetera. I, I honestly think that, that that should be rethought a little bit. For example, I know that there are two trucks that are gonna have to be replaced by the town in the next uh. Year and a half, two years, uh one town. A pickup truck. Which is bought used by Pete Lawson in. Uh. Uh, every penny of. It's a like, we have a small truck in our town. That is reaching the end of its lifetime. Trucks are extraordinarily expensive. They range in the compact with the town. Has always been that we will put money enough aside. To be able to replace our capital assets when it's necessary to do so. So it's not to have up and downs of. Oh my God, we've got to spend two hundred thousand dollars per truck and we don't have the money for it. And therefore we have to increase the mill rate. Okay, we paid for it this year, we reduce the mill rate, then we have something else. That's a compact that we've had with this town. Lou, when did you institute this?
This was uh at the early eighties.
Yeah.
At which time there was no money set aside for reserve. Because the, the means by which this is permitted in the statutes is a board of finance made, and this is an interesting word, procure. Up to four mils on its own authority and put it in an undesignated fund, which in our town was viewed as a slush fund. And so the compact that was made with the town was, it would not have an undesignated fund. It could be marked as a slush fund around the dark. They would, it would be specific appropriations for specific purposes on a planned basis. So that when capital needs. When, when capital equipment or capital facilities reach their useful lifetime, we would have the money to replace. And, and that no money would be in those accounts that wasn't appropriated by the people for a purpose proven by your board. And, and. And that's my understanding of it. My. During the first year of COVID. Uh, when we were facing, we didn't know. We decided to absolutely make no contributions to that fund during the following year. The upcoming year because we were worried about revenue side of the budget. And we were quite frankly. Fair. I mean, there's no other objective word that you can use where we were coming. Uh, and in retrospect, uh everybody paid their taxes. People wouldn't be able to during COVID. Everybody did, we're at the normal uh compliance with our tax revenue. But I think that cutting those funds. I know it saves you money, but it's only gonna come and bite us. On the other side of our anatomy. Uh, at some point in the future. The only other thing that I would point out is if you set aside one thousand dollars for legal. Uh, for this one. Uh. We have been very, very conscious of legal expenses and everything else, and frankly, we've heard not. During the past six years of my tenure as per select. However. If we run into anything. That requires a legal brief to be written. That thousand dollars is absolutely insufficient. Under any, any measure. Of uh that, I think that that should be restored as a five thousand dollars. God hopes, or I pray to God that then nothing happens. That's going to necessitate. A expenditure of that nature. But to, to not prepare for something like that to happen. Is, I think, unconscion. And uh, I think that that should be restored. That's, those are my two comments. I'm, I'm aware of both of those issues and we're discussing on Monday night.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, you know, that's being a former first selectman as well, Willie and Henry and I. I agree with Henry's comment one hundred percent. I think it's uh, it's penny foolish, whatever the saying is. It's not the last penny foolish.
It's penny wise, it's not foolish.
I, I, I think you make a huge mistake by not funding that line for legal services um in the uh municipal budget. As has been proposed. I just, I think it's absolutely foolhardy.
Yeah, Peter Jensen, um. I look at this budget and it shows that it is around eighty one thousand dollars over last year's. Budget, I guess. But then like here, I hear that there's a four hundred thousand dollars short. Maybe even more. Um, how can one even? There's not, not any, any um. Indication of revenues here whatsoever, which is the other side of the equation. So that obviously there is a revenue shortfall somewhere to make the four uh four hundred thousand. Less the eighty one thousand that we're increasing it at. But how can one even make a decision on this or any of these without knowing all those facts? And there is no way of knowing any of these facts. Can you supply these numbers so that we can see in some type of. Clear way of understanding it, that four hundred thousand dollar shortfall?
Can we do that?
On chief?
What, show what the difference is? That's the difference between the projected revenue and the.
But there's no projected revenue.
No, so as, as Lou, as Lou has already said, you know, and, and as other people have said, this is just the spending plan. And as you pointed out, it becomes a budget when we start talking about projected revenue. Your question about projected revenue is one I've always wondered about myself and have. Over time, started to learn a little bit more about. I do know that last year. We also took uh or allotted from the general fund a certain portion in order to keep or, or lower the, the mill rate. And each year that is an option. And it's one that we consider when we look at the spending plan and the projected revenues. So that deficit is not something that just appeared this year only.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But, but again, I'm asking that the board of finance bring together the figures so one can review. What those revenue means. We don't see that here. And then we also don't see what is the amount in the general fund. That is available to spend because.
It can come on Monday, it can come on Monday and you can. For the finance meetings, you're welcome to attend those and those are presented then.
Yes, but your time, your, your suggest, you're telling us that. You know, we have to uh eventually this will come to a vote to approve a budget. But with not, not knowing what the revenues are. Not knowing what is in a fund that could be available, pay for a budget. How can one make a clear decision?
But one day, one day we will be discussing.
Yeah, we have a study on Monday. And it all comes together and those are the figures that we have to work with. We would have a stack of papers to give you. That's our job. That's what.
That you'll be able to present them.
Yes. Yes. Uh seriously, we can, we can actually get that information out somehow, some way. Um, I don't know if you're part of the, the um.
So they're on the website.
They're on the website. Yeah, so.
Like I said, Colonel, that's important.
It's a board finance issue that we have. This is what the town is saying they want. We're saying. We get the information from Michelle. Revenue. He's telling us what it is. We make a decision by taking this budget and looking at this budget and then going back to the town. And saying, this is what we have, this is what we can afford, this is what it's required to. Do we set the mill rate after the vote or do we?
Yes.
Tell them. That's what that is.
After the town meeting, we do.
And here, this is the hearing tonight.
So what I think you're concerned is, is how much of your tax is going to go up prior to you making a vote?
I'd like to know what is, you know, general fund that maybe no taxes may get what whatsoever because all that money could go in and cover a shortage.
Well, we already did that last year, so that means we're entering this year already in debt, already seven three hundred thirty five thousand dollars. Perhaps we didn't like, we're absolutely.
I'd like to point out, just recommend. Are you recognizing me or?
Yes.
Okay. Board of finance.
I'm sorry.
The board of finance. Board of finance each month gets reports. And exactly, as I'm receiving. And they also use the revenue persons for state funds that we've received this prior year. That's how they anticipate.
I'm not suggesting that that is not.
Excuse me.
But it's just being distributed to the.
I have orders so I can finish my statement.
It's distributed.
Thank you. So my point is that the information is available every month and reports that board of finance post along with their, their minutes.
On the website.
Take a look at the information.
On the website, that's correct.
Three months.
Right, but again, you're not presenting it to the public. It's somewhere in, in a meeting or somewhere in the record, but you're presenting this to them.
So you have to the public, if you found, that information will.
Well, that's going to become available. Not, and at the moment when we need to vote as opposed to a moment when you need to reflect on what the figure said.
The town meeting is where you vote.
I know that. It would be great to have those numbers beforehand so that we can reflect them. Now, that's, so that's my request to the board of finance to get those information out to the public sooner than just at the moment of vote. Now, I do have a question specifically on a line item. Which is under. Public works three oh, three thousand one. Which is. Well, actually, the third largest line item in the entire budget. Um, it is paving the capital improvement. Which it says here as an explanation. Um. Costs to pay approximately one mile of road. Okay, so, and we have a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, lines in the entire budget. Um, so what are we expecting to pay? What, what one mile? And why do we need to do one mile? Don't we go a half a mile?
Chair. Chairman. For resident expert, our, our manager, D P D. Being here. Okay, and he'll tell you, Peter, what mile you may break that up into two uh half mile or four, four mile.
Okay, this is paving, this is not just paving and yeah.
If, if you would. Please.
And the town has uh thirty three miles of roads. Thirty three, uh about four miles of that is dirt. We don't pay it the other month. Uh, so we pay, I, I have enough money to do like an overlay. An inch and a half asphalt overlay on a road, a lot of miles. And that, that price changes quite frequently. Uh, Kyle Road has to last for years before I can pave that one again. Uh. Music Mountain Road is about seven miles. Or actually it's a little less than that, but it took us seven years to get over. And it needs to be, one, one mile a year. Uh, or close to a mile. Some years you don't get quite a mile. Like depending on what you do for character, sometimes uh. Like, like that first mile of Music Mountain last year, we, we built. Which was an extra cost and then uh. Because the, the material on reason was such. A bad shape that there was no way to maintain it. Well, so you grind it out. You pave over it. Dark. Yeah, so. So this is figuring miley here, this is repaving, not paving. So four miles, uh, you said thirty three mile. Uh. You totally ruined. Right? Four miles are. And the rest then twenty nine. And you also then said we're not looking to pave any dirt. Yeah, okay. Uh, that clarified something I, I had no idea because it says pave. But what you're suggesting, this is repaving over system. Yeah. Okay, let's do that. The asphalt gets pretty bad to get it. It's not worth passing top over anymore. And is there some title? Of, I live in the village, so the roads are pretty good in the village. Done. Um, but uh, I need, is there some way that roads are prioritized out there? And is there some like strategy that, that how this is done? Because a hundred thousand dollars is the third large. Uh.
And it's my main, Mr. Chair, if I may address. Our D P young manager has over the years prioritized those roads and has decided which roads need to be paved or whatever. This is a matter of fact, it's kind of a sliding scale, if you will, here, okay? This road was done twenty years ago, and I think you pointed out, excuse it happened. You have seven miles of road in seven years to get over. So if you figure a hundred thousand dollars a year, a mile of road. And I think it like, perhaps we have one of the best, one of the most, well, I hate to use that term. So one of the most. T C W managers here, that you play and teach track with the robots. On how they need to be paved and when you need to be.
Right, just giving it a pass, but it's not clear what it was.
And I'm glad you had a stand for connected. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Right, you have.
Just for chair, I mean, it was more about the uh, the behavior towards the. That fair event question. Also, I was asking for your attention to get it brought back to your chair. It should be. That cross talk that happened was respectful and informative, however, it doesn't always stay that way and when it doesn't. It's not fair to the person that. He's often asked for you let that in, but it seemed to.
Okay. Any other?
I'm told, but that's part. Um, so Henry did a really good job kind of explaining the reserve account, million dollars you have like for. What is the ultimate balance in that account? It looks like we've been funding hundred twenty six thousand, hundred forty thousand, hundred fifty thousand. Where should that account sit in terms of amounts?
Well, theoretically, that account should sit with an attic reserved when the time for replacement comes. But it, it obviously also has to keep pace with inflation and the price of equipment. I know one of the things we have to look at of board of finance when it comes to equipment replacement and, and I did a lot of this. When I was working at Salisbury Bank, a lot of short term uh financing for equipment purchases. Um, for a five to seven year loan, the interest rate is almost. Nominal, really not particularly affected. This town has a lot of borrowing capacity available to it. It's one of the options we have to consider going forward if we're gonna try to continue to balance our budget.
Vincent in Camellias. I just want to say that this meeting makes it really clear over me, the need for collaboration. And information to be. Made early enough so people can review it. And what Greg said before, when we worked with P and Z uh in a collaborative manner. We got results. That's how the firehouse deal happened. And the other important point in that is that we had high expertise. And that's the big thing you've cut on, in the, these budgets I'm looking at. And I want to think with vision. And use that money where we're not operating in a penny wise, town foolish manner. And the last thing, what. And the last thing, what we did on P and Z recently is the new plan of conservation development. I assume you both looked at that. But in order to accomplish. Some of the things that we propose in there, which are visionary and aspirational, takes money, takes. Expert additional advice. So don't shortchange in that area, I hope. Thank you.
Brad.
Yeah, one quick question. Um, I don't know if ARPA funds factor into the budget because my understanding. Is the state of Connecticut now has four hundred million in ARPA funds and uh, that uh, that. May help alleviate some of our issues.
That was last year.
My mic is compressed out. Mr. Laser, what hasn't heard, if you're picking up with the news and what's going on, all that money is going to UConn.
Four hundred million?
That's what it looks like right at, right at this moment. Right at this moment, that's what it looks like, all those ARPA funds. And I, I can't, I. I can't go to the bank with that. Right now, that's what it appears that that four hundred million dollars is going to the UConn system.
One of the challenges on state funding though, every year for this town is that we rarely at this time. Know the actual amount of money that is being designated to municipalities, ours in particular. Scary parts determine the revenue, as Peter was pointing out, um, that we will get from the state for our town.
But Andrea, I also just wanted to say that I am very concerned about the money that you cut from the budget. Um, at your uh, sort of, or not, I don't think it's been a lot of support in my opinion, what they call. Uh, where you did cut things like legal fees, consultant fees, because we don't have those professional. Um, professionals available to us to consult with, to work with. We can really, um, you know, we can find ourselves. Actually paying out more money because of missteps and mistakes that get made. We do live in a litigious society. So I do think it's important for us to have that type of funding available. To those boards and commissions need to have access to it. So I'm going to ask you to consider putting that back. I also would, um, nobody here has mentioned it, but I'm also concerned about the money you took from the library that the Board of Finance. The board selectmen had left in there. I know they didn't fund their pullback. Um, but. We have very few organizations in this community that offer community events. And if you attend. Any library event, it's always well attended by many people within the community. You know, it's very rural. Environment here in Falls Village, there's not a lot of social economic offerings. To the people who live here that we can go to without travel. So the library offers many. Opportunities for us to socially, culturally, you know, come together and. And I would really like, excuse me.
Oh yeah, we can't hear uh, the people in the back if you can refrain from speaking.
So I would like to see that funding also returned, um, so that the library can continue to offer that kind of programming. It is used by so many people in this community. And more importantly, it is open to every person in this community. Which is not true of many other services.
Thank you. I'm, I'm a big fan of library. Uh, this subject was debated at a number of meetings. And I certainly understand the priorities and the way the library is sort of a, a community epicenter. Uh, and, and what it contributes. Nevertheless, we are faced with what I think is going to be a recurring issue. Between a proposed spending plan and a grant list that has difficulty supporting that. And we have, we're going to have to face that every year. The board has discussed among itself. The uh, the idea of getting more involved with budgetary process earlier next year. So we have a better understanding of all the components. But it's a challenge. It's going to be a challenge. And it's not going to go away. This grant list is going to magically double overnight. Uh, despite the fact that a lot of people's values have gone up during COVID. And uh, inflation is still inflation. And we have to deal with that in our spending plan. So we're aware of that and we're working on it.
Can I just respond to that? I would just ask that next year you hear the public before you make those decisions.
Well, we, we are hearing the public now. Not gonna make final decisions till my day.
I agree with Andrea. I think her point is well taken. It might be for the future if you have to hear. And listen to the, the original budgets of the Board of Education and the municipal. Hear what the, what the community has to say because after all, this is the community that pays the bill if they are willing. To pay a little extra uh, for a service that, as Andrew has pointed out, serves the entire community. I think you should consider, and I call for what Andy has said, and I, um, I, I do think you should not fund the library below fifteen thousand dollars. That, um, isn't that what you put in? I know they asked for twenty-two, four. For the, the fifty, you reduce the fifteen to twelve-five, didn't you?
We, we put in more, uh, we actually. Want to select in fifteen.
That's what I said.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I, I would hope you was putting that up to fifty. I know you probably can't do the sixteen. Had originally asked for, but um, I think you should do the fifteen. My, my concern is from, from what. Frank was saying, it looks like there's some building going. And, and hopefully it will attract more young people to, to our town. One of my top concerns is. Is that this community becomes gentrified. That's not good for anyone. And you, you might, we might have to make a bit of a settlement. So that we keep the younger people here. I mean, Amy, me, Steve, you, okay. Carol, oh no, me. We've all had kids still that grow, have grown up and have, have benefited. From that kind of collegial atmosphere. And I think it's really important that we think about what our community looks like. And the fact that we may have to pay just a tad more.
I think the tension comes, and this is what we struggle with, some of us, um, is that. There is a visionary plan of conservation and development. And we do have an excellent quality of life here. And we do have plans to revitalize certain elements of this town to keep it from gentrifying. The tension comes with. You know, how long are we willing to make the investment before we see it pay back? And that is where the tension is. The investment means maybe we don't have as. Prophy or robust a general fund for a few years. We, and we use the money in order to develop. Uh, and, and see to fruition the development of new housing, which will bring more property taxes, obviously, to the coffers. And as you pointed out, more families and young people, um, more economic. Uh, activity in general in the town in order for businesses to remain and thrive. I mean, there are lots of things that are very connected. And you know, that's what we're struggling with. There, there are different philosophies about that. But it is about how long can the town be willing to invest before they see payback? Yeah.
If you don't, it could put in trouble.
I agree. But, okay.
On that comment, I'd like to know if there's a, a track record of operating in that manner. Because what I've seen in I've been here twenty-four years. It operates exactly the way you described this time. And we need more of that longer range thinking. We need more creativity in looking where sources of revenue can come from. And, and people have to be paid to do some of these things that we look at volunteer store. Because it's getting more complicated all the time.
Interestingly, there have been um, members on our committee that have pointed out that very fact that. We can't do things necessarily the same way we've done them for so many years because there, the environment has changed. You know, and, and we're dealing with different things. But we need to think more creatively the way you're thinking and. It, but it takes more than just Board of Finance, which means we need to, I believe, one of the things we need to do differently is to work. I know we work collaboratively, but I think we should work even more collaboratively.
Absolutely. That's why we were successful with the firehouse situation. And, and it was a real example of. P and Z working with wish and selectmen and our extra committees, a lot of time, a lot of writing, a lot of. And outside of expert advice, plus money. But it also is resolving. Issues that have gone on for ten years in addition to the sale of the firehouse. So if we can look to that kind of approach.
My quick answers.
Hi, Dan. So I just wanted to, Andrea, and Pat about the library. Because I know a lot of people talk to the selectmen and they made this, you know. With a lot of thought, made the decision to give them all money to the library, which again is free to every single resident in the town. It's unlike anything else we have here. I am on the board of the library and I know that the volunteers at the library. Were so hard to raise money. I mean, the good faith, it's not. Um, in, in the library, there's so much, been so involved. Because you also know it is beautiful, and most remarkable in our town. Artists of care, um, which then taking care of. All the other great things the library does, so. It is, and also to the point that we have no idea revenue. Um, have no idea if this is. What we were requesting, how that is. Three five hundred dollars.
Okay, then. Okay, last.
I, the, the point of a few people before here, um, speaking on the cap. The Bible rule, it is with community. And I guess you know, I'm gonna say I appreciate the hard work. Or finance in selection because I know it's not easy to look at all these. Factors and figure out what you can put, what you can take away, but I see the library as such an important part in this town. All the new people that have come in in the past few years is the, the point where they need everybody.
It's a broad, it's, it's broad based too. It's not just one segment of the community. It's every segment of the community with the library services.
Well.
Everybody, everybody in this group, we have, we have a, a tough job to do. We're trying to balance. The, the amount of funds that we, we can get. Everybody in this room probably has their own, look, their own thing that they would like to have funded. If we gave money to everybody for everything they wished. You know, forget it. The town's full of ridiculous. So somewhere, we gotta come to a balance. And we have to come to an agreement. You have to come to an agreement because you can't have everything you want.
No, I think it's a board of finance. It has to come to a agreement with citizens.
You have to. Yes.
I know what you're saying.
You can by vote.
What's that?
You can by voting.
That's exactly correct.
That's right.
I, I understand it.
Corinna, I mean, what I heard tonight is that the town has a deficit. A substantial deficit. So we need, you know, it's not that the town has a deficit, it's that. Does, uh, the spending plan is, uh, is not supported by the. Stop going next year. That period of time. It's not, we, we haven't lost any money on the debt. Well, this is where we need more information. We have to decide what amount of money. That's all there is to it. I mean, if I go shopping, I have a budget. And then I gotta stick within that budget. I can't just go to the store and say, I would like. To be in the mill for the, okay.
Lou explained this to me before I even got on the Board of Finance.
I have a question. My understanding was that the issue before. Was not a question of whether or not we were going to be insolvent if we enacted the spending bill that was originally presented. Or as you have adjusted. But then the, the, the crux of the decision that you were trying to make was. At the end of FY uh, twenty-five, July, right next year. What would the general fund back? Not that we were going to be insolvent, but that the crux of what you were concerned with. Was whether we went to have nine percent or ten percent or eleven, having nothing to do with, with insolvent or.
No, not.
Am I right or wrong?
You are right.
You're correct.
That's, that's what, that's what, that's what these people are asking. We're not talking about. Uh, spending in a way which we have to borrow money to operate the government. We're talking about how much are we going to have left over? That represents good practice, best practice, which is around ten percent or so. And, and I'm not trying to second guess where you want to stand up. But is this clear now?
Well, there's another part of it that people are concerned about, and that is the other source of the fund, which is tax.
Yeah, I mean, still, with the assumptions that I saw on P, which are not here today, added. Uh, projected tax revenues, not at a hundred percent, but at ninety-eight percent. Enterprise income, which is permits and so forth and fees, not at, not at a hundred percent of what they were last year, but at a lower percent. Uh, the, the state road aid, which Tim gets, which helps us, the uh, education cost share, about twenty-five thousand. All those figures, interest, which is about fifteen thousand, when we add all those up. And look at where we would be in twenty twenty-five in July, we were looking at around ten percent. Is that true or not true? That's what we're talking about. And everybody is, is misled by thinking we're going in the red. No, it's. 百分之百是 best practice for to be in the green. And that's your job to figure out. But that's what we're talking about. Is that clear? Okay, thank you.
We had originally targeted a higher percentage of the general fund at fifteen percent. Uh, in the face of the projected spending plans. We were down to twelve and a half and we're closer to ten percent right now. We, we do not feel it's prudent to go below that.
I'm not second guessing you on that. I just want to make it clear, we're not talking about.
Down to ten percent still means the tax.
Still means we have a surplus. Yes, we have a surplus.
But does it not mean? Because I hear from different people that.
I'm sorry.
Wants to know if she's gonna have pink bees, tattered or not. Actually wants to know if the tax is gonna go up or not.
Yes. I think yes.
We haven't voted on it.
We haven't voted on that, but it, it appears that's the case.
To some people on the Board of Finance, it appears that. Okay, so no, yeah.
Hi, I'm using mountain. I just, a lot has been said. I'm gonna be very. I just thank all the people that volunteer in this town, that keep our backs in this town, our brilliance and. Fire is amazing. The library does a huge amount of fundraising. I think it's too much. And I think that the town can even out the, um. The load, I guess, by giving it the increase it asks for. I also think that we don't, we want a quality of life. And I'm willing to pay for that. I'm not asking you for a bare bones budget. I am willing to pay for quality of life. So uh, I want to support. That.
Yeah, I just wanted to. One sense, go back to what. For, because when I look at this sheet of paper here, these, it, it shows an eighty-one thousand dollar increase from last year. Um, and so when we look at the library, which is a finance institution, I'm a volunteer and I'm a doctor. I thought I could still give them some money every year. Um, and I look at their requests and how it's come down. But when I see that there is, it's, the budget is eighty-one thousand over what it was last year. That concerns me. And then I kind of sympathize with the fact that maybe the library. That concerns me, and then I kind of sympathize with the fact that maybe the library. Might only get a smaller increase than what they desire, but then now. When there's lots of money still in other funds that I cannot view. It's, it's, it, uh, distorts my view, my perspective, my desires around, you know, some of these cuts. So that's what I asked before, is that we need to see a bigger picture of this. So that we know where, you know, where monies can be spent appropriately to keep the quality of. You know, where we wanted it.
I, I liked also that the auditor recommends small town like Falls Village, between twelve and fifteen percent. And they said, he said. Closer to the fifteen percent.
It's nothing to me, because I don't even know what twelve or fifteen percent means.
Of the expenditure.
What?
Of the annual expenditure.
Okay.
Point, point of clarification at least for. I spoke to the auditor, the same auditor, audits the health industry, and I, I was aware of what was said to your board, and I inquired. And we have a town with low debt and center, and I pointed out what I thought were favorable aspects in our situation. Thinking that the twelve to fifteen percent was just generally covering every town with a wide array of different factors. We're allowed, I believe, by, by state regulation or statute, to have fifteen million dollars worth of debt, and we don't. We don't anywhere near that. We're, so I asked him about, he said, no, no, you, you're missing the point. It's not about your status as a, um. As, as a, as a sound economic entity, talking about town. It's if there's a disaster. He said, if it's a disaster, I said, what do you mean? It's a disaster. It, you, a full-blown tornadoes, whatever. So, well, then this is a disaster. The disaster is declared, and there's disaster relief. He said, well, you might need money before that disaster relief comes. And, uh, well, I said, but we have money. He said, but you might need more than that. You might need to borrow it if you don't have that twelve to fifteen percent. But I said, we not only have the ten percent, if, if there's a disaster, we're not likely to buy his truck. We'll keep Pete's truck. And so. He said, pay in books, you know, all those reserve funds, not that we spend it in Kansas. But we have that to get through that disaster. So we're not talking about structural, we need between twelve and fifteen percent. We're talking about. Imaginary disaster, which happened, we see it out in the Midwest, but we not only have our general fund. It could use as a bridge, those reserves. Because again, we'll be suspending the, the capital expenditures while we clean up the mess from the tradition. That's what I'm saying. You don't, I'm not convinced you need that twelve and fifteen percent.
In, in, in that regard, if you look at it objectively, we have a million dollars in our capital reserves. You're talking about a ten percent fullback of six hundred thousand dollars, which would be ten percent. So you have twenty-five percent backing the town in case of emergencies. And there is nothing ever written in law that precludes us from using that, uh. Reserve money, temporary, temporarily, uh, for an emergency. I'm just quite. So I think we're financially. End story, I think we should adjourn this.
Okay.
Just wanted to point out that, that people are saying they didn't know various things, but. There's been several workshops, uh, meetings up to this point that the. Both, both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance have had that. That you can learn some of these things out if you attended either. It's not like if this is fresh coming out, it has been.
We, the citizens have responsibilities to, just like you do on the Board of Finance. Part of our responsibilities is to make sure. That we attend meetings and that we know what's going on, so that we can understand how you, uh, for your decisions. So it is all.
If I might, I would like to thank the Board of Finance for this evening. I'd like to thank everyone who has been here this evening to ask questions about our proposed spending plan. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Salute.